Good evening, everyone, and welcome, and thank you all for being here this evening. We're ready to commence our Board of Supervisors meeting, Pittsmanian County, Tuesday, March 18, 2025, 7:00 PM. Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia, 24531. Can we call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Ingram?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Here. All right, if you would, there was a lot of tornatic activity this past weekend, and a lot of people lost life and also home and substance. Join me in a moment of prayer. Amen. Let's stand, please, if you're able, and let's say our pledge of allegiance.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the rule of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. Board, are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to add the following items to the consent agenda: budget, calendar revision, and VRA funding application.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Thank you, Mr. Ingram, respectively. Move met with second. Any discussion?
Where is that going to be on the agenda?
It's going to go...
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Okay, I got it.
Item I and J.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody good? Any other discussion? If not, cast your votes, please. You good? Motion passes. I'm assuming 7-0?
Yes.
Thank you so much. All right, let's see. That being said, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. You got it, go ahead.
One or the other.
So moved.
All right, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman and Mr. Dalton, respectively. Move met second. We will approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes, please. Thank you so much. Motion carries 7-0. Gentlemen, consent agenda as amended.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda as it has been amended, and that is my motion.
Thank you, Ms. Delly.
Second.
Thank you for the support. Mr. Height, move met with second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Thank you. The motion passes 7-0, which now we will move down to item number eight on your agenda, which is presentations. Mr. Cluster?
Yes, sir. We do have two of those this evening. If you all would come down to...
Thank you so much.
Hey, good evening. One of the coolest parts of this job is to honor and recognize people that's beyond worthy. So if Mr. Jerome Cook would please come up here, and after I do this presentation, I'm going to have your family and friends come up here, and we'll get some pictures made, Jerome. It's good to see you. Absolutely. Mr. Cook, this is a resolution 2025-0302 honoring Jerome Cook's volunteer fire service, and it reads, "Virginia at the Pittsmanian County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on Tuesday, March 18, 2025. In the board meeting room, the following resolution was presented and adopted. Whereas Jerome Cook has been an esteemed member of the fire service since the age of 19, beginning his service with Tunstall Volunteer Fire Department and later playing a pivotal role in the establishment of Mount Herman Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas, Cook has dedicated 64 years of service to fire suppression, rescue operations, leadership, training, and community outreach, serving as a mentor and role model for generations of first responders. And whereas, his extraordinary dedication, leadership, and selfishness have earned the respect and admiration of colleagues, community members, and officials alike, contributing significantly to the strength and legacy of the fire service in Pittsmanian County. And whereas, Cook faithfully served as a firefighter, lieutenant, captain, assistant chief, and ultimately as chief for 22 years from 1984 to 2005, demonstrating unwavering commitment and exemplary leadership. And whereas, his commitment of over more than six decades exemplifies the best of public service, showcasing a profound sense of duty, courage, and compassion that has made a lasting impact on the lives of countless individuals in the county and his community. And whereas, Cook has given unselfishly of his time and efforts for the county's betterment and remains an active member of the fire department, attending meetings, assisting with fundraisers, and serving as a lifetime member on the Board of Directors. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board expresses its sincere appreciation to Cook for his noble dedication of his time and efforts toward the development and advancement of the county and fire and rescue system. Given under my hand this 18th day of March, William V. Ingram, Tunstall District, Pittsmanian County Board of Supervisors, and the Honorable Robert M. Tucker, Chairman of the Pittsmanian County Board of Supervisors." Thank you, sir. Jerome, if you want to make a comment or two, you're more than welcome to.
Well, I appreciate this honor, and it is an honor. But I appreciate the board and what they've done for their departments and what they continue to do. They've given us more and more to be able to fight fires, and we do appreciate it. I want to thank my wife for putting up with me for this. I've been golfing home a whole lot, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And it's an honor for us to do this, but the person you really need to thank is HF Haymore, because he was the one that brought it to my attention that we need to honor you. So that's your buddy right there. So HF and the other firemen, family members, y'all, please come up here.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to recognize a gentleman that has done a lot for the hurricane victims and helping and building and looking after them. He's just been a great asset to them. At this time, I'd like for Mr. Devin Taylor and his family, anybody that's with him, to come to the front, please. Thank you, brother. Yes, sir. Thank you. Ted Jul and your family, everybody come here. Mark Worley in the crowd, that have called him out. Come on in. Come on here, Mr. Worley. At this time, I'd like to read this recognition certificate of excellence for Mr. Taylor and his group. The Pittsmanian County Board of Supervisors proudly recognized Devin Taylor for his unwavering dedication, compassion, and service through the cabins for Christ and campers' care. His visionary leadership has brought the county, Pennsylvania county community together to build 75 cabins, ensuring that displacement families and individuals have a place to call home. Through his initiative, cabins for Christ has constructed emergency shelters for victims of Hurricane Helene in the western northern Carolinas, providing much-needed relief for schools, employees, students, and Buncombe County, Buckland County, okay. Devin Taylor and his team has worked tirelessly to ensure that these efforts have warm and secure places to rebuild their lives. Devin's commitment to utilizing his talents and faith to inspire and uplift others in bodies, distrust the spirit of generosity and selflessness, we deeply appreciate his dedication and his selfless service to those in need, and we extend our heartfelt gratitude, best wishes for the continued success in your mission to bring hope and relief to the communities in need. Given this 18th day of March 2025, Darrell W. Dalton, Callens Grutner Supervisor, and Robert M. Tucker, Jr., Chairman of the Board of Supervisors.
I just want to take a real quick moment to think. We give all the praise and glory to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and without Him, that's where the vision came from, and without Him, we wouldn't be standing here today. None of us would even be in this room. And so we just give Him all the praise and glory and honor. I want to thank the entire business community of Pittsmanian County. They came together on a vision that was actually written on a white napkin. And so there are so many business owners in Pittsmanian County that entrusted in this vision, invested in it, and so we want to thank them. But I want to personally thank Richard and Paula Fuller. Richard, every, the 75 cabins that went down, Richard touched every two by four and cut almost every two by four that went in them, and it was shipped down to Swannanoa and Asheville. And Mark Worley came over and helped put them together, and since that, they both came down, put them together, worked in people's homes while they were there, spent many, many weeks away from family down there working and remodeling homes. And since we've come back, I want to thank the Old Dominion Agricultural Center, Roger Jefferson, and them allowing us to come to the old Shorter Brothers Garage, where we're starting to build more cabins for the next disasters. So that's coming back home to us. And Mark and Richard and Paula have already built one cabin out there now that'll be going to a little girl who lost her mother and her father in Hurricane Helene. So I just want to thank the board. I want to thank everybody that's made it possible, my family for supporting this whole effort, but most of all, we want to give the Lord all the praise and glory and honor for each and everything we do. And we just thank you so much for this opportunity. Vic, thank y'all. And I got to check one thing. Vic pointed it out. When the governor sent me a letter, he wrote, he spelled my name "Dabbin," and I told him, I said, well, maybe the Board of Supervisors can get it right, and it looks like y'all did. Thank y'all. Thank y'all so much.
Oh, yeah, that's the wonderful part of our meeting, and our job is to be able to recognize heroes among us, and we just appreciate what you do for the community and your credit to this county. We move to item now, number nine, hearing of the citizens. And before I read this, let me just say, Madam Clerk, you have how many signed up?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. So here's what we're going to do. We've allotted 45 minutes for hearing of the citizens. I'm going to extend that to an hour, so that translates into 20 individuals, correct, by my math? And we will give priority at our next meeting to those people that didn't actually get to speak tonight, okay? So we're going to extend grace about 15 minutes we're going to go over, okay? Each person addressing the board on the hearing of citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his/her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his/her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member of the board. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Madam Clerk, who's our first speaker tonight?
Amy Davis.
Ms. Davis, welcome, and thank you for being here.
I am Amy Davis, Bannister District. My husband and I are landowners, farmers, and concerned citizens that live on Mill Creek Road. We urge you not to destroy our beautiful countryside of Chalk Level, Whittles, Mill Creek, and Sheva communities. We are not a remote area. There are many people that live in these communities. Data centers are a part of modern life, but this is the wrong location. There have been many red flags from the beginning of this project. Being in the heart of rural Pittsmanian County with a 3,500 megawatt power plant and the possibility of 84 data centers in our backyards will put Chatham on the terror watch chart. Do you want that risk for here? I fear BALCO will threaten our communities in a negative way, impacting the region's air, water, noise, and light, eroding the quality of life for the people who call this place home. If BALCO's proposal of 750 acres is granted, this puts at risk 2,223 acres. Mr. Alley has said this is the first phase. There is plenty of land. We will continue. This will make our farm and our home surrounded by this project. We love our land, and we want to be good stewards of our land. We want to be good neighbors to our neighbors. This project is not a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Let it go. There will be other opportunities that will not destroy our rural farming neighborhoods with concrete and pollution. BALCO has had plenty of time to refine their project. Let's end the emotional distress and anguish created by BALCO's rezoning application. You are our elected officials. The task before you is simple. Comply to the...
Thirty seconds remaining.
...plan and deny this project. Listen to the Planning Commission's recommendation. With fear, anger, and anticipation, we pray for a no vote to BALCO. Thank you for your service to our county.
Thank you, Madam.
an onsite power generator project on approximately 747 acres on Chalk Level and Mill Creek Roads, less than three miles from Chatham Town Limits. And whereas Balco LLC has filed a rezoning petition with the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission to have the aforementioned 747 acres rezoned from residential agricultural to heavy industrial. And whereas the 2010 Pennsylvania County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Eight, states industrial development should be avoided in areas where prime agricultural and farmland would be significantly affected. And whereas the Chatham Garden Club, an affiliate of the Garden Club of Virginia, strongly considers the proposed Balco LLC project and rezoning request would have a significant and negative environmental impact on residents and wildlife, particularly in the communities of Chalk Level, Mill Creek, Whittles, and Shiva, as well as Motley and Transco Roads, and in fact, all of Pennsylvania County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chatham Garden Club strongly opposes the proposed Balco LLC project and rezoning request of approximately 747 acres on Chalk Level and Mill Creek Roads. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to all members of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors and the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission upon approval by the Chatham Garden Club. And I think you all got it.
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Kaylee Hicks.
Ms. Hicks, thank you so much for being here. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Kaylee Hicks, and I'm from the Whitmull Community in the Tunsil District. Balco's project sends a troubling message to the next generation. It will be a struggle for younger people such as myself to call this county my home in the future if we cannot take control of this problem before it spreads like wildfire. I teach the younger children at my church in Gretna and know they should be considered too. Do they deserve to grow up in an industrial blight? And as for our farmers, our providers, how much appreciation for their decades of hard work and dedication do we truly have for them if we are so quick to get rid of it? This project comes with several risks. Having large data centers and gas power plants will depreciate the value of homes and other buildings within the areas affected. On top of that, the air and water will be polluted. While natural gas is cleaner than coal, its combustion still releases carbon dioxide and other pollutants that contribute to air pollution. The water isn't safe either. As for the noise, the odd hum replacing the calmness in the air of Pennsylvania County will disrupt domestic pets and their owners. We cannot forget to be advocates for the animals as well. Their natural habitats will be destroyed, and they will have to relocate. As for the farm animals, who knows what farmers will have to do with them? But who cares? Since Balco stated they are just cows, right? According to Balco, this is only the beginning of their plan. As you know, a cut was made, and 1,483 acres were taken off of their initial purchase request to more easily persuade you to vote yes. If they are allowed to buy this land, which is equivalent to half the size of Manhattan and New York, who's to say they won't go for the rest of their initial plan and not more? These data centers and gas power plants are ill excuses to use the land. If they are implemented, that land can no longer be used for any other project that could benefit the communities more, such as playgrounds, parks, or houses to bring more families to the area, whereas this project might drive them away. If you vote yes for Balco, you publicly admit to being contradictory towards policies that were put in place by previous members of your seats 15 years ago. According to the Pennsylvania County Comprehensive Plan of 1991, the preservation and conservation of prime farmland is important to the area's growth. In 2010, when the document was revised, it remained a priority to mention by stating, "Where possible, industrial development of prime farmland and agriculturally significant areas should be avoided." The document has had no further revisions that are available to the public, so these priorities should remain the basis for where each of you stands. Vote no to Balco. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Tim Reynolds.
Mr. Reynolds, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Tim Reynolds. I live in the Stanton River District. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of Balco to make a statement about the postponement of the hearing. As you guys know, we did ask that it be postponed until April. I want to share with you a little bit of the rationale behind that postponement. The last month has been very busy for the team. We've continued to refine the key details of the proposal, and we've done this based on feedback from our community outreach and, and working with the county staff. For example, at the start of the month, we did have a meeting in Gretna where everyone was welcome. We had a detailed presentation. We answered questions from the audience. And I will say it was a very respectful discussion, and I think we can all be proud of that. I was very appreciative of it. Last week, we had a series of meetings with county staff. It was very productive. We continue to refine our proffers in conjunction with our rezoning requests. We came away with specific changes to the plan. And all of these changes are geared towards minimizing the impact to everyone in the community. We're not insensitive to that. As we've said before, you've heard changes happening very rapidly in the data center market. It literally happens on a weekly basis. Something changes. The needs change. The design of the facilities change. And we continue to monitor that. We continue to take that information, and we continue to change our proposal to make it the best for the county, quite frankly. All this work, whether it's talking with neighbors or working with the staff and updated our technical details of project, is geared towards really the ultimate goal of attracting a high-quality end user that we can all be proud of. Someone that everyone in the room would know their name, everyone in the country would see and know that Pennsylvania County was on the forefront of technology for our country. And that would bring tens of millions of dollars in revenue to this county that I think we could all use in a very smart way. So, we're getting closer and closer every day. We appreciate your patience. No one wants to get to the end of this more than the team. We're working hard every day. So, I do appreciate everyone's patience. I have a few, well, I don't have much time left, but I would take questions if you wanted to ask me, and I'll be around for the rest of the night. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Aubrey Myers.
Mr. Myers, thank you for being here tonight. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Aubrey Myers. I live in the Stanton River District, I think. They moved me every couple of years, but I think today I'm in the Stanton River District. When I ride my bicycle from Chatham to Gretna, from Gretna to Chatham, I travel on Chalk Level Road, Mill Creek Road, Zion Road. Sometimes I go through Climax and down to Whittles and down Painton Road. And I see these signs in the middle of a field that says, "Save our farmland." So, I got to looking at the maps of the Balco project. None of those signs are on the land that Balco is requesting to be rezoned. 750 acres, none of it is being taken by eminent domain.
Excuse me, sir. Can you raise that mic so they can hear it at home?
None of the land is being taken by eminent domain, being confiscated or anything. Tobacco and textiles no longer run the economy in Pennsylvania County like it once did. Or do we like it or not, technology has taken over. And when technology takes over, a data center comes with it. Pennsylvania County needs to get on board with the data centers, or they're going to be left behind. We're already behind in some areas of life compared to the rest of the state right now because we have no jobs, no economic development, really no industry to speak of. The schools, public safety, sheriff's office, Parks and Rec, and the county administration all need money. The last figure I seen with Balco figures was $158 million. If somebody gives y'all a check for $158 million, you can deviate out to all the offices in the county. And every citizen in Pennsylvania County, including the opponents of this project, will benefit. And if the data center is built, 95% or more of the county won't even know it's there. But 100% of the county will benefit from it. And Parks and Rec recently done a survey, and y'all were giving them access to plan. I done some homework and done a little math. We looking at 30 to 40 million dollars just as a start for the 147 pages of that plan. We need ball fields. We need bicycle trails. We need pickleball courts. And, you know, the list goes on and on.
30 seconds remaining.
And I'll close by touching base on the water line from Hurt to Chatham. I could spend all night talking about the advantages of that. That will kickstart economic development between Chatham and Hurt and other areas other than the data center. So, in closing, I urge you to vote yes for this because if you don't, the entire county will suffer. Thank you.
Gary Hodnett.
Hang on, hang on. One second, Mr. Hodnett, just before you go.
Hang on, Gary.
Hold on one second. Listen. The applause is fine. Each side has the opportunity to speak, express their opinion, but we will stay in order. Okay? Come on, Mr. Hodnett.
Mr. Chairman and members.
Yes, sir.
I'm Gary Hodnett, mayor in the town of Hurt, Stanton River District. As our county leaders, you are now called upon to make a pivotal decision regarding our future. The seven of you have an opportunity to bring development to our county, something you should savor. You and only you can make a difference. As decision makers, you now have an opportunity to right many of the wrongs that have cost us much-needed economic development in the past. We are geographically the largest county in the state, and yet we remain among the poorest. Many ask why, and when we are one of the richest in resources and land. Could it be the decisions like giving 10- to 15-year tax moratoriums to new businesses seeking to come to our county? I don't know or have the answer. I just know you have an opportunity right now to bring in an outstanding and profitable industry to our county, and yet here we are debating for some reason that no one can pin down other than a handful of people who simply think it would be the end of the world. Let's be honest. What are we famous for? A few may say farming or agriculture. Or is our claim to fame our willingness to remain the poorest county in the state? That certainly is not worth us bragging on. We need to somehow break this mold, stop standing outside and looking in through the window. It's time to finally open the door, or if not, even kick it down, and let's make an entrance. All of the accusations leveled against this data center project have been debunked. Noise, draining the lakes and rivers, dry, pollution, views, setbacks, all debunked. Let's not forget, they are not asking for any moratoriums on taxes. They will begin paying taxes year one. This is a huge check to cash for the county, as well as a check into why we do need these people calling. This decision to approve the zoning request for Balco should be a seven to zero vote in favor of moving our county forward. This decision is an easy layup or perhaps even a slam dunk. Everyone in this room, including those who are against it, know and understand the benefits it could bring to the majority of our county. It checks the most important block we have, which is providing opportunity for the mass as opposed to just a small segment which cites fictitious issues already proven non-existent. I urge you to vote in favor of moving our county forward. Please do not allow a handful of naysayers to pull you back down into the mud of the past. Together, let's take the first step toward the promise of a future this opportunity can deliver to our residents as well as position in our county for positive economic development in the future. Vote yes to Balco. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Patty Reynolds.
Ms. Reynolds, good evening and welcome.
I'm Patty Reynolds from the Stanton River District. I'm, I am in favor of the Balco data center. Last year, the board unanimously rezoned A1, R1 land to M2 for the Ringgold data center. Three people spoke in opposition. This project passed because of the revenue it will bring to the county. Four months later, there was suddenly an uproar over the Balco project. Arguments about the comprehensive plan, the environmental lawsuit, the noise, air, water, and light pollution, the scenic views somehow didn't apply to our Ringgold neighbors then, just their own backyards now. The county is home to over 60,000 people. Someone has tapped red slippers at everyone and said, "There's no place like home." Home really pulls at your heartstrings. But let's think about who the real villain is in The Wizard of Oz. Glinda convinced Dorothy to take a journey that ended someone's life, and she withheld the truth that all she needed to do was tap the slippers to begin with. The truth here is that part of the land is adjacent to Transco Village, Zoned M2. It is accessible to the Mountain Valley Pipeline. About half of the property is 2,000 feet off of 29, making it an ideal location for development. The landowners want to sell their land. The gotcha, aha, for you documents weren't shady and inconsistent. They represent the ongoing negotiations and concessions between the county and Balco, which is now, which is how business works. The northern end of the county, home to Hurt, Gretna, and Chatham, will benefit from a water treatment plant and a water line along 29. The properties adjacent to the development will not change. They will still have their scenic views on their 100-plus acres. They may see a sign or a fence like people do when they drive by the old grit power plant. We have over 100 million in capital projects on the county's to-do list. If you vote no for this additional revenue from Bilico because of 924 signatures on the coalition's petition, then you can vote no to any future tax increases for the rest of the 59,000. Because two years ago, the uproar was about the tax reassessment on our real estate properties. So, where will the money come from? Bilico has worked with Pennsylvania County to make this a win-win and wants to invest in us. Vote yes for this great opportunity. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Colin Adams.
Good evening, Mr. Adams. Welcome.
My name is, my name is Colin Adams, and I've been a resident of Pennsylvania County, Stanton River District for 68 years. Our county has a rich history of farming with tobacco being the primary crop that sustained us for many years. As a young man, I spent many summers working in tobacco fields, witnessing firsthand the hard work and dedication required to keep our farming community thriving. However, times have changed, and the farming industry as we once knew it is no longer the back The northern end of the county, home to Hurt, Gretna, and Chatham, will benefit from a water treatment plant and a water line along 29. The properties adjacent to the development will not change. They will still have their scenic views on their 100-plus acres. They may see a sign or a fence like people do when they drive by the old grit power plant. We have over 100 million in capital projects on the county's to-do list. If you vote no for this additional revenue from Belico because of 924 signatures on the Coalition's petition, then you can vote no to any future tax increases for the rest of the 59,000. Because two years ago, the uproar was about the tax reassessment on our real estate properties. So where will the money come from? Belico has worked with Pennsylvania County to make this a win-win and wants to invest in us. Vote yes for this great opportunity. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Colin Adams.
Good evening, Mr. Adams, welcome.
My name is Colin Adams, and I've been a resident of Pennsylvania County, Stanton River District for 68 years. Our county has a rich history of farming, with tobacco being the primary crop that sustained us for many years. As a young man, I spent many summers working in tobacco fields, witnessing firsthand the hard work and dedication required to keep our farming community thriving. However, times have changed, and the farming industry as we once knew it is no longer the backbone of our county. The revenue generated from farming has significantly decreased, and with the rising cost of running the county, we're facing a financial challenge. If we do not find alternative sources of income, the burden of funding county operations will fall heavily on us, the taxpayers. The data storage facility presents an invaluable opportunity to bring substantial income to our county, alleviating the need for tax increases on the residents. The establishment of the data storage facility will not only generate revenue, but also create jobs and stimulate economic growth within our county, community. The role of the Board of Supervisors is to act in the best interest of the majority of taxpayers, ensuring that decisions made will benefit the county for years to come. By supporting the data storage facility, you will take a significant step towards securing prosperous future for Pennsylvania County. I respectfully request that each member of the Board of Supervisors vote in favor of the data storage facility. Thank you for considering this request and for your dedication to the well-being of our county.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Stephen Watson.
Mr. Watson. Good evening, welcome, sir.
Thank y'all for this opportunity. My name is Stephen Watson. I live in the northern part of the county, Stanton River District. Been a resident of Pennsylvania County for 68 years, so that tells you Colin and I about the same age right there. The first 31 years of my life, I grew up on a farm just outside of Chatham, just a few miles outside of Chatham here. And that land was surrounded by other farms, which had been farmed by my family for generations. I was even told as a child that our family came over many generations back and settled some of that land. So I kind of have some close ties to farmland. It's hard to get away from that. But we can't live in the past. We have to look towards the future. And then we have an opportunity to do something to make the future better for generations to come. I have a son and three grandsons live in the county. I'd like to see something here for them down the road and for their children. Another son in the military that I hope will bring his family back here when he retires. But there's got to be something for him to come back to. Got to be a job. He'll retire with benefits, but he'll want to work. I've heard a lot of concerns about noise and environmental impact from the proposed facilities. But from growing up on a farm, I remember life on the farm was not always quiet. I spent hours and hours during the day on loud tractors. Lost part of my hearing because of some of that. At night, it would take some time before your ears would quit ringing. I could hear neighbors' tractors, irrigation equipment, things running in the night, cattle. Cows like to be heard too sometimes. They make noises too that you can hear for quite some time. So it's not always a quiet thing living on a farm. And then there's the environmental issues, pesticides, chemicals, and other contamination that run off into the streams. Also, I've been reading a lot that cattle are a significant source of methane gas. So it's a fact. It's a scientific fact. Farming is good, but not without its downsides. Maybe this facility may be a good neighbor after all, if you think about it. I would really request that you say yes to Belico, that you approve whatever zoning, rezoning is necessary.
30 seconds remaining.
And that you request, beg these people, if you have to, to locate here in our county. We have a population of close to 60,000 in this county, and DBJ News recently said there's about 100 residents in close proximity to this proposed facility. Who do we do this for, the few or the many? Just please consider this, pray about it, please.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Greg Buepert.
Mr. Buepert. Good evening and welcome, sir.
Chairman Tucker, members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. My name's Greg Buepert. I'm a lawyer at the Southern Environmental Law Center. We represent Kathy Stump in the Banister District and other residents of the Banister District in the Callens-Grettna District. Like many in the audience tonight, our clients are frustrated by Balco's delays. After the first delay in February, a company representative said, "Let the games begin." I can assure you that for my clients and the public, this isn't a game at all. The Board is not obligated to grant another delay. We urge you to make April 15 the last date the public needs to worry about this project. Balco wants the public to think it has scaled down its plans for a power plant. Its cover letter to the Board says it will build a modest 300-megawatt gas plant with temporary turbines. But this is just the first part of something bigger. Its concept drawings show eight permanent turbines that can produce over 10 times that amount of power. And the company's website is clear. The site has enough gas to generate 3,500 megawatts of power. The Board should not be confused. This is not about 300 megawatts. Balco wants a rezoning that will let it build the largest gas plant in Virginia and the second-largest gas plant in the entire country. And gas plants emit air pollution. Burning gas produces fine particulates, a pollutant with no safe exposure level. It's linked to respiratory illnesses, congestive heart failure, and premature deaths. Balco can send this pollution up a tall smokestack, but it's still there in the community causing harm. I'll end with an observation about the comprehensive plan. The company's suggestion that the Board should ignore the plan is outdated in the face of new technology is absolutely wrong. The plan provides stability precisely for a moment like this. As we have outlined in our letter to you, the plan provides the Board all the reasons it needs to deny Balco's rezoning request.
30 seconds remaining.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Logan Mills.
Mr. Mills, good evening, welcome, sir.
Good evening. I'm Logan Mills from the Callens-Grettna District. And I'm a full-time tobacco, small grain, and beef cattle farmer. And I am here tonight because, within the next year, I will no longer be able to leave my home and go northeast, south, or west without seeing solar panels. And as a steward of the land, that really makes me concerned of this project as well. Many look at me and they say, "You're from Callens, that's from the other side of the county from where this project's going on." What really concerns me is what door does this project open up that could be in my back door? And I worry about the future generations that's coming. Agriculture is still alive in your county, and there are other young people like me who want to make a future of it here. Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Sandra Payne.
Ms. Payne, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Payne. I live in the town of Chatham. I would like for all of you gentlemen in front of me and all of the people behind me to take a little car trip, maybe tomorrow, because the weather's going to be beautiful, ride down Chocolate River Road to Mill Creek Church, and drive around to the back of the church, and get out of your car or truck, and stand there and look across that meadow, hear the birds, feel the wind in your face, and this will be no more. That concrete wall, it's going to be a concrete jungle in a few years. And we won't have that option. Birds can't chirp, they will not fly in that area. And I ask each of you, if this was within 500 to 800 feet from your back door or your front door, would you want to vote for that? I don't think so. They're saying that this plant will use over, well over a million gallons of water a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Is our water supply going to replenish fast enough for that much water to be absorbed on a daily basis without any ceasing? I don't know, but it makes me wonder. In God's eyes, everything has a season, whether it be spring, summer, fall, or winter, or elected term. The voters of this county will remember who turned their backs on them for projected money that we may never see. Other counties are having to spend a lot of money for attorneys who are suing Balco, who are suing them because their taxes, they say, are too high. So if he's not paying taxes, we're not getting taxes. So that's all I got to say. Nothing for nothing is nothing.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Lexi Shellhorse.
Ms. Shellhorse, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Lexi Shellhorse from the Callens-Grettna District. And tonight, I'll be speaking on behalf of the Coalition for the Protection of Pennsylvania County. Although some people think that I'm probably speaking on South Side Sewn Circle. But tonight, I left my thimble and my needle and thread at home. I want to talk about two letters pertaining to Balco. If you're going to have someone write you a letter of recommendation, you should really know who is actually writing that letter. Ironically, both of these letters that have circulated on social media and were submitted in Balco's most recent application were written on the same day. The first was from Charles City County, dated January the 21st and signed by Bill Cota. He is an interim county administrator who resigned a week later. Also to note, I have an email from the county administrator's office stating that they have no record of that letter in their file. Now, gentlemen of the Board, we know that if a letter is sent on behalf of a county, a copy of that letter is kept by the administrative assistant. She also verbally told me the letter was on old letterhead and had not been used in years. This would lead us to believe the letter was his personal opinion and not a statement on behalf of the county. Now, Mr. Cota isn't hard to find. In fact, his name has been in the paper recently. Residents have asked for a forensic audit of Charles City and the removal of their Board of Supervisors chairman. According to an article in The Chronicle on February 5, residents believe Cota was hired to hide information from the public pertaining to finances. He was questioned by the previous Charles City County Commonwealth Attorney, Rob Tyler, and provided no information about skepticism. The second letter. I'm a member of the Virginia Farm Bureau, and I was very disappointed and embarrassed by a letter written on February the 21st of this year by our local bureau. Farm Bureau is a grassroots organization that represents 130,000 member families. And through its grassroots policy development process, its policy is clear and concise when it comes to data centers. Farm Bureau opposes data center on agricultural and forested land, period. Pennsylvania County Farm Bureau took it upon themselves to descend from this clear and concise Virginia Farm Bureau policy. This letter was written solely by Pennsylvania County, and it is in no way endorsed by the state organization. For anyone questioning this, Farm Bureau policies can be found on their website. For those screaming revenue, why has no one brought up Anchorstone? It's 950 acres already under construction, and the revenue predicted is comparable to the Balco's project. Thank you, Board.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Robert Key.
Mr. Key. Good evening and welcome, sir.
I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Robert Key. I live in Chatham, Virginia.
Raise your mic just a little bit, sir. Thank you.
Is this better now?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Robert Key, 11 Chatham. During the April 6, 2025 question-and-answer session in Gretna, Mr. Ali stated that an FT8 mobile-packed gas turbine would be used to produce the campus's electrical energy. The FT8 mobile turbine is manufactured by Mitsubishi. And according to their website, this turbine can deliver 31 megawatts of power at an efficiency of 36.7% in its standalone mode. No mention was made how this could be increased to the 60% as Mr. Ali has used in previous presentations. Nevertheless, I will continue with his 60% efficiency rating. To produce the useful energy at 60% would require consuming 52.7 million megawatt-hours of energy, 60% of that power to power things on-site, and the other 40% to be waste of heat. Running 24 hours a day means a daily consumption would be 1,260 megawatt-hours. This is an incredible amount of energy. To put this in perspective, the average home in Virginia consumes 30.5 kilowatt-hours daily. The energy used would be enough to power 41,300 houses. All of this 52.7 megawatt-hours would be used entirely on-site and every day, 24 hours a day. All of this will be converted eventually into heat. This heat energy will escape into the atmosphere on-site. Where does all this energy go? It ends up as heat, all of it released on-site. No homes would be powered. What impact will this have on the locale? The ecological impact in the immediate area would be catastrophic. I thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk.
Emily Mayhew.
Ms. Mayhew, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Emily Mayhew. And for the sake of my colleagues that have told how many years they've lived at the county, I've been in it for 82, almost. The birthday hadn't happened yet. I live in the Stanton River District. For 35 years, I worked for a company out of Lynchburg. Many of you know it, some of you probably have worked there, B W Framatone and Ariva in Lynchburg. The last 20 years that I worked there, I was in management and often found myself and my staff having to look at many sides of a problem and weigh out situations requiring decisions to be made that was not going to please everyone. In these types of situations, we had to look at the pros and cons to determine which was In these types of situations, we had to look at the pros and cons to determine which was the right decisions to move the company forward, not the best one to necessarily please me or my departments or my other staff members. I think this is the situation Pennsylvania County finds itself in now. No matter what the final decision, there are going to be some folks who will not be happy with it. I only hope and pray that everyone will look at the entire overall benefit that this project could potentially mean to our county. I know a lot of folks are voicing their opinions on social media that seem to believe that they think that the Balico data center would only benefit the folks in Hurt, but that is far from the complete picture. Yes, Hurt would benefit greatly from the water plant, but so would the county, with fire hydrants through the 29 corridors that would benefit and provide water for local fire departments to move efficiently and effectively to fight the fires that happen in those areas. The schools and fire departments and EMS all stand to benefit greatly from the tax revenue generated by the Balico project. A number of folks here tonight have attended meetings in the gym at Hurt School and had rain coming down through the roof, where they had to put buckets in the floor to catch the rain, and I'm told that the bathrooms and dire repair need a repair there. I'm also told that Mount Airy has a number of large dollar projects that need to be done also with the school there. All the citizens in the county should be able to see a tax break from this project. Additionally, a number of good paying jobs are to be generated by this if it's approved. I realize that many of the proposed area, in the proposed area are against this with noise, traffic, air quality, and aesthetics of the buildings being built among the main reasons for objection. In the past years, the county has let several major businesses that would have generated good revenue slip through their hands to other states and dams such as the chicken plant, Coors Brewery, and Caesar's Casino. How long and how much longer are we going to continue with the not-in-my-backyard stance and see our county decline, our taxes go up, and our residents move out of the county because we have nothing to offer them? In closing, I want to say that even though we may differ in where we stand on issues, we are adults and should be able to agree to disagree in a Christian-like manner without calling names and being ugly to one another. My prayer is that we do just that. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Jordan Key.
Mr. Key?
My name is Jordan Key, I've been in resident at Chatham for about 26 years now. Can you hear me okay? You got it? Okay. Most of the time, people can without the microphone. We've heard a lot of things about what Balico will do. Well, I have actual notes on what they have said they are not going to do. They are not going to get a traffic study. Okay. They will not get permission from Appalachian Energy Power for the impacts it lays near damn. Balico, by its own statement, Mr. Ali said, when he was asked if any local contractors have been promised contracts, he said, I quote, "I do not remember making any promises."
Excuse me, ma'am, raise your mic up for the benefit of those at all.
Will you repeat that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Balico by its own statement said, when asked if any local contractors have been promised contracts, he said, and I quote, and I have this recorded, "I do not remember making any promises." For such a smart man, he sure ought to remember something like that, but he conveniently does not remember making any promises. He said that at the Grettna Theater, by the way. Balico is not going to be paying the county a cent on the data centers per se. Whoever is occupying the data centers, that's who will be paying the taxes on them if someone pays it, not Balico. These are not gonna belong to him. He's gonna own the energy plant, sell their energy, that's it. We're gonna have to collect taxes from whoever's in the building, it's not him. Balico is gonna run that water line from Hurt, but once they run it from Hurt to the Balico entrance, they're done with it. They're gonna say, here, Pennsylvania County, we're giving you a water line, like it or not. Oh, by the way, you're responsible for maintenance and everything and hook, you're responsible for it all, but we gonna give it to you. We don't know how it's built, we don't know what it's built with, we know nothing about it. They're just gonna build it and give it to us, say, here, now you operate it, make sure we never run out of water at the data center, because we will go out of business, so you gotta make sure we get water no matter what. So they're not gonna maintain that. Balico stated it does, quote, "not plan to use eminent domain." What does that mean, you don't plan on it? That doesn't rule it out. Balico states it does not anticipate crossing private property. That doesn't say anything, it doesn't, right now it doesn't anticipate it. Balico states it has no current tenants lined up for any of the proposed data centers. If this is such a once-in-a-lifetime, gotta hurry up deal, oh, there are no tenants already knocking on the door trying to get signed up to build there and be in there. Something's wrong here. This whole thing, I'm telling you, he's unregulated, he's unproven, has no business sense at all, it smells like three-day-old fish, and we need to take it out to the dump, not here in Pennsylvania County.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Alice Bond.
Yeah, thank you.
You need to be pulled up for something. There you go.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide.
My name is Alice Bond, I live in the Stanton River District. I'm speaking to present the research I've done through the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, the DEQ. I was looking for facts, and I found the most reliable source. This agency is responsible for the regulations, the regulations protecting our air, water, and land. They set the regulations for the construction of power plants and data centers that are under consideration here. I learned that there are regulations that must be agreed to by developers in order for permits to be approved, but I also wanted to know if the air and water emissions would be monitored once the plants were operating. So I made a phone call. I spoke with Paul Jenkins at the Blue Ridge Division of the DEQ based in Bedford. He assured me that the air and water emissions would be monitored continuously as long as the facility was operating. I asked about land, since the most reason concerned I've noticed is the effect on animal life. He said that as long as the air and water quality is maintained, the land will be kept healthy and will support animal life. I spoke at the last meeting about our experience in visiting the sites of the Balico power stations and data center in Mecklenburg County. We were glad to find that the plants did not produce loud noise. Only one produced any sound, and it was very low. We got out of our cars to be sure we were hearing hardly anything. There was no sound at all from the other power plant or at the data center, and again we got out of our cars. Based on my research with the DEQ and my experience at the Balico plants and data center, I don't believe that air, water, or noise pollution are actual problems. Having said that, the water that comes out of the power plants or data center might not be drinkable at that point, but it's safe enough for streams and rivers based on strict DEQ standards. And the water from the rivers is further filtered and tested by water treatment plants to be sure it's safe to drink. One of the goals of the DEQ is to foster trust between citizens and the developers of industry by making their processes and other data public, and I highly recommend the website. It's not natural for a rural area to welcome industry. Progress is disruptive, and we can't sugarcoat it, but the farmland in question is not being farmed by big tobacco. There is no way to generate the tax dollars that big tobacco farming brought us for decades without some sort of industry. The citizens of the entire county need revenue, and we have before us a way to get it for years to come. The facts are before us, and I hope you will consider them when you vote. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Steve Worley.
Mr. Worley, good evening, welcome.
My name is Steve Worley, I live in the Stanton River District. First of all, I'd like to say, I'd hate to be in y'all's boys' shoes next month, the 15th of April. You got a big job to take care of. First of all, I'd like to just touch a little bit on the benefits of the water line that's being offered. We'll fund a new water treatment plant, and we'll fund 20 miles of water line from Hurt to Chatham, and that's probably a cost of about $35 to $50 million at no cost to the county. The water line will provide safe and dependable water along Route 29 corridor through the county residence and provide fire protection along 29 with approximately 200 fire hydrants. We'll provide water backup for the town of Grettna, the town of Chatham. The water line will be constructed in VDOT right away and purchase private easements. No eminent domain will be used. Pennsylvania County has no means to fund such a project, so how can we, as a citizen, reject such an opportunity as this, to us at no cost at all to the county? So I hope the board will see this as a win-win for the county. Now, let's just take a minute to talk about the long-term capital needs. Listed by the county, capital improvements are somewhere around $182 million, and we still owe $27.3 million on school bonds. Now, the $182 million, there's no way to pay but to take on debt and raise taxes. The estimated tax revenue from this project, the data plant, is somewhere around $148 million a year, give or take. Certainly, that would ease the tax burden, not only for the county but the citizens of the county. We gotta consider 60,000 people that's in this county. We're not sacrificing our way of life in the county by rezoning 750 acres. If we're not open to opportunities like this, who is even gonna be here to enjoy this way of life? We're just going to continue to lose population and to have to pay for services on the back of the taxpayers. We have an obligation to each other, to our children, and to our grandchildren to provide opportunities for them. We can't assume that these opportunities is gonna knock on our door every day. We have to stop saying no to progress, and we have to act now, or will our county even survive? I would like to thank the board for listening to my comments.
Madam Clerk, who's our next speaker?
Darrell Campbell.
Mr. Campbell, good to see you, welcome.
Good evening, Darrell Campbell, living in the Chatham-Blairs District and, of course, pastoring in Bannister District. I'll be as brief as I can, but I wanna say that all I've heard for the last several months is money, 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 money. And, you know, being a pastor, you think, well, you sure believe in that, don't you? Because you take offerings and all that, yes, I sure do. And listen, the Bible does not say that money is evil. It says it's the love of money that's evil. The root of all evil is the love of money. And I was in college many years ago, and the president of the college, the Bible College, used to tell us, you can't do wrong to get a chance to do right. And I, again, have heard lots about money, money, money. I understand that part. I think the issue is location, location, location. And robbing Peter to pay Paul doesn't work. I don't care what scenario you're talking about, it doesn't work. It's bad economics, and it really is sinful ethics. So someone once said, money is the barometer of a society's virtue. So we have to watch the trail of money. Where does it go? And again, it's not evil by itself, it's neutral, it's a tool that can be used for good, it can be used for bad. Go to the Scriptures as I close. The rich young ruler was wealthy financially, but there was something missing in his life, and he never figured out what it was. The man in hell was rich. He needed something, but he never could figure it out, it was too late for him. So we have to be very careful what we ask for, we may get it, and we may have to pay for it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, this is speaker number 20, so we apologize to the other speakers. Maintain your list for our April meeting, they will get priority, okay? Who's our, who's our final speaker this evening?
Richard Cox.
Mr. Fox, good evening, welcome.
Members of the board, I'm Richard Cox, I'm in the Stanton River District, and I'm a citizen of Pennsylvania County, and I would like to state the fact that I am in favor of this project. And I've heard a lot of comments by a lot of people here tonight, pro and con, and it's something we need to weigh, and I'm sure that it's very difficult to figure out how many are in favor versus how many are opposed, and, you know, that's the nature of this game. I think that the benefits of this data center far outweigh the liabilities of it. I've heard the arguments about sound, loud sound. The decimal level of Norfolk Southern Railroad, I live next to that, Route 29 tractor-trailer traffic, I hear that every day, dumpsters being loaded and unloaded across the road from where I live, there's creaking and banging that goes with that, base amplifiers on automobiles in every place in the county and in town, shopping centers, wherever, that are all twice the decimal level of this project. And I think that the developer has addressed this and is attempting to buffer and make this a project that won't be disruptive to everyone's lives. And I understand the fact that people want maybe abundant power, they want internet, they want progress, but when you do that and you put it in somebody's back door, they're not too appreciative of it. I was on the landfill siting committee in Bedford County some years ago. Everybody knew we needed a landfill, but nobody wanted it in their backyard. This is a win-win situation, local business, regional, state, and federal, and it's necessary for our national security. We're in a changing world. We've got to protect our country, and by protecting the data that we will be able to store and build redundancy in, and these centers will protect us, and we're way ahead of everybody else in the world. Virginia is the number-one state for the number of data centers in the country. The Highway Corridor 29, been talked about for years, we need public water. Chatham needs it, Grettna needs it, and I hope we can avoid building a new water treatment plant and use the water that would come with this project. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
I wanna thank everyone that spoke tonight, and to be continued April 15th. At this time, we're gonna take a pause for the calls, we're gonna take a five-minute recess and be back.
Need to come to order so we can conclude this meeting. Let's come to order, please. Let's, let's come to order, please. Thank you so very much. We, we, we must take care of business. Thank you so very kindly. All right. We now move to item ten, and that is the rezoning public hearings. Can we, can we ask someone to close those doors or cut down on the noise? Thank you, sir. Each person addressing the board under the hearing of the citizens.
Can't close them.
Can't close it.
Gotta leave one of them open.
Yeah.
You can leave a crack in them, how about that? Each person addressing the board under the hearing of the citizens shall be a resident of landowner of the county or a resident agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his/her name, district, in an audible tone of voice for the record, unless further time is, oh, I'm reading the wrong one, excuse me. Pursuant to Article five, Division six of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The Board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County citizens and its posterity. Let's see, case R dash twenty-five dash zero zero five. I open the public hearing at eight thirty-nine. Ms. Ragsdale, please.
Case R dash two-five dash zero zero five, Kelly Crogman and Kenneth Crogman have petitioned to rezone ten point seven three-three acres located on State Road nine twenty-one Martin Road in the Callens-Gretton Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agricultural District to allow for agricultural uses on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one seven eight are permitted. February fourth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission recommended by a five-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I do not see Kelly Crogman here, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Thank you. So there's no one other than yourself?
I, I do not see her here, so no, I do not believe the applicant is here.
It is at eight forty that I closed the case, and I'll ask, any questions for Ms. Ragsdale or Mr. Dalton, what's your pleasure?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, in case R dash twenty-five dash zero zero five, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of ten point seven three-three acres, se- ten point seven three-three acres from R one Residential Subdivision, Suburban Subdivision District to the A one Agriculture District to allow agriculture uses on the property.
Is there support for that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. And Mr. Dalton, thank you for your motion. It is movement with second that the property of the Crogmans be rezoned. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes, please. The motion carries seven zero. In case R dash twenty-five zero zero six, Robert and Elizabeth Yates, I open the public hearing at eight forty-one. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash two-five dash zero zero six, Robert and Elizabeth Yates have petitioned to rezone thirty point three zero four acres located on State Road seven fifty-one Glassland Drive in the Callens-Gretton Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agricultural District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned A one. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one seven eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, on February fourth, twenty twenty, on February fourth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission recommended by a five-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff summary is enclosed in the packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yates could not be here tonight to represent this petition, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Ragsdale? If not, let's see, that is in Mr. Dalton's district again.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, in case R dash twenty-five dash zero zero six, I make a motion to approve the rezon of three point three zero acres from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agriculture District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned A one.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
I'll second his motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? In favor of said motion, cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman, can I get you to close that public hearing?
Eight forty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you. I got you, eight forty-one.
Mr. Dalton, was that your motion? I apologize.
Yes, it was.
The second on that?
I was second.
Thank you so much. Property's been rezoned from Ms. Yates. Motion passes seven zero. All right, in case R dash twenty-five dash zero zero seven, uh, let's see, East Bowls LLC. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash two-five dash zero zero seven, East Bowls LLC has petitioned to rezone three parcels totaling twenty-eight point two-seven acres located on U.S. Highway twenty-nine in the Chatham-Blair's Election District from M, M one Industrial District Light Industry and RC one Residential Combined Subdivision District to M one Industrial District Light Industry to allow for a convenience store and gas station to be placed on the property. Once the property is rezoned to M one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash three-eight-three are permitted. February fourth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission recommended by a five-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ryan Gatewood is here to represent the petition.
He is here. Ms. McCluster, eight forty-four, we open.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. My name is Ryan Gatewood. I'm in the Tunstall District, and I'm a civil engineer and president of L and D Professionals in Danville, and I'm representing my client, East Bowls LLC. They requested to, as Emily said, rezone three parcels. One of them is a double-zoned M one and RC one, and we're going to combine all three parcels into an M one district for a proposed convenience store or gas station. I am here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for this young man? No questions, this time, I'm going to close the public hearing at eight forty-five. Let's see, that's Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ryan, for coming out tonight. So in case R dash twenty-five dash double oh seven, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of three parcels totaling twenty-eight point two-seven acres from M one Industrial District Light Industry and RC one Residential Combined Subdivision District to M one Industrial District Light Industry to allow for a convenience store and gasoline station to be placed on the property.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman, for the motion, Mr. Ingram for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you so much. Case R dash twenty-five dash zero zero eight, Robert Yaman. Ms. Ragsdale, please, we open the public hearing at eight forty-six.
Case R dash two-five dash zero zero eight, Robert Yaman has petitioned to rezone two point eight-one acres located on State Road eight seventy-three River Ridge Road in the Westover Election District from Residential Multifamily District to RC one Residential Combined Subdivision District to allow for the placement of a single-family dwelling on the property. Once the property is rezoned to RC one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash two-six-seven are permitted. On February fourth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission recommended by a five-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Robert Yaman is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, sir. Anything to add, sir? Nothing to add? Any questions? If there are nothing to add, we close the public hearing at eight forty-seven. Let's see, that is Mr. Whittle.
Thank you, there, Mr. Chairman. In case R dash twenty-five dash zero zero eight, I make a motion to approve the rezoning of two point eight-one acres from RMF, that's Residential Multifamily District to RC one Residential Combined Subdivision District to allow a single-family home to be constructed on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle, for the motion. Support. Uh, thank, Mr. Ingram has a second.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dalton, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes. Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Property's been rezoned, sir. Yes, sir. Case R dash twenty-five dash zero zero nine, at eight forty-eight, we open the public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash two-five dash zero zero nine, Jennifer Hooks has petitioned to rezone nineteen point six-seven acres located on State Road six-seven-seven White Fall Road in the Banister Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agriculture District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one seven eight are permitted. On February fourth, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission recommended by a five-to-zero vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jennifer Hooks is here to represent the petition.
Ms., is it Hoax or Hooks? Hoax. Ms. Hoax, anything to add?
She may not be here, I'm sorry.
May not be here.
So I'll answer any questions the Board may have.
Any questions for Ms. Ragsdale? If not, at eight forty-nine, we close public hearing. And, uh, Mr. Dudley, would you assist me, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, thank you. In case R dash twenty-five dash zero zero nine, I make a motion to approve this rezoning of nineteen point six-seven acres from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agriculture District to allow an accessory structure to be placed on the property. Ms. Chairman, that is my motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there support for the motion?
Second it.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. All right, movement with second to rezon. Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes.
Mr. Whittle.
Thank you so much. Motion passes seven zero. Property's been rezoned. Now we move to item eleven, unfinished business. No unfinished business. New business.
No new business, Mr. Chairman.
No new business. Thank you. Any matters from the work session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Board members report. This evening, we're going to start with Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is probably the saddest list I've shared in a long time, but I want to start by remembering and asking you guys to be in prayer for our delegate Danny Marshall, who is stepping down for the General Assembly. This past Saturday, he received a new lung, and, um, he's won reelection eleven times, and, um, he's doing very well, so that's a good thing. Four years ago, Corporal Robert Grubbs with the Sheriff's Office, um, lost his life, and, just a couple of weeks ago, Caleb Barker, who I've known for about five years, he was a grandson of Bobby Gene Akerson. Caleb was with the Danville Fire Department, and he, uh, lost his life. On a bright note, fifty years ago this month, I joined the Air Force. They said it was a great way of life. They didn't know anything about politics, I reckon, but, uh, March is a good month. Two of my babies were born in March. Four years ago, we lost Bobby Fleming, who was a, a legendary race car driver, but he won the first Craftsman Truck Race at Rockingham, and his truck is in the Hall of Fame at Talladega, Alabama. Sixteen years ago, we lost Ruben Moore. If you've ever had a Ruben's Cheeseburger Special, which used to be wimpy since days gone by, you know exactly what I'm talking about, but we lost Ruben sixteen years ago. My cousin by marriage, Jackie Hardison, who was a traveling nurse, became very sick and lost her battle this past Saturday. Want to remember Scott Budd, our IT Director, he's been out having surgery, but he's doing well. We do miss him. We opened, had the honor of being present when a new daycare center was opened in Brazel, nurturing minds daycare, such a needed commodity, and we're very glad to have them. This past Saturday, Paul Jackson, who was a helicopter pilot, was killed, actually, he was in the Westover District, but if, if you ever heard somebody say he would do anything for anybody, that was Paul Jackson. He'd flown up from Chase City, Virginia, to give a cancer survivor and his daughter a ride on the helicopter, and after he dropped them off, apparently there's some kind of problem with the chopper, and he went down, and he was killed in that crash. Bill Mangum, old friend of mine for about, I guess, fifty years, he was a founder of the Virginia-Carolina Early Dirt Racers Association. Likewise, he was extremely active in racing. He, um, he passed away recently, and, and I do want to close on a good note that it's such an honor to have Devin Taylor here, who has done so much for so many people, and it was just a great honor to have him here and to be able to recognize him, and as well as Jerome Cook, and I think the resolution probably said it all. So having said that, I'm finished, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Dalton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll try not to be as long as Mr. Ingram, he's pretty lengthy. It was all good. You done good.
I'm normally short, so I'm making up for it.
Oh, I like to, um, also think about Danny Marshall and his family for his surgery. Uh, also, a longtime friend and a coworker, Mr. Luke Jefferson, he passed away. Keep, keep his family in your prayers. Uh, again, Devin Taylor was here. He's done great things and continuing to do great things, as Mr. Ingram had spoke of him earlier. And I forgot to mention last meeting, it was our Young Farmers Week. Wanted to recognize them because that is our future, for us, our farmers. Attended the Blair's Volunteer and Rescue Banquet. Was very nice, that's a great bunch of people over there. This weekend, the Grutner Volunteer Fine Rescue will be having a fundraiser, and I plan to attend that. I want to thank all the staff for everything you do. We had a great meeting. Thank all the board meeting, or board members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Ms. Whittle.
Thank you, there, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank the staff, thank everybody for what you do. Really appreciate y'all putting up with us. I'd like to tell everybody to keep Danny Marshall in your prayers, because everybody needs those, and, um, well, that's about what I'm carrying. I'm gonna turn my time over again.
Not just yet, thank you. Mr. Dudley.
I have no idea what he's saying, but anyway, he's gonna turn it over to you, I think. Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank everybody for coming out. Appreciate all the staff's work. Good meeting, interesting, interesting meeting. I would like to give a shout out to a gentleman that, that remained here this evening after the crowd left, and, um, his name is Jimmy Harding. He's in the audience. Jimmy is the gentleman with the Vietnam hat on. Jimmy's on town council, um, first time, first year serving this year, is that correct? Jimmy's in United States Marine Corps, and, um, you don't go very many places without seeing him, proud to be a Marine. He was a fighter, he fought in Vietnam, and, um, just very, very proud of, of Jimmy. His wife Janet also, she's a fighter, uh, she's a cancer survivor and doing well and thriving, and, uh, just want to say I appreciate you two for staying for the rest of the meeting. Had a good meeting this evening. Appreciate all the board members, all their hard work, endurance. Thank the staff for putting everything together so it can be as smooth as it is. And, Ms. Chairman, with that, I'll hand it back to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bowman.
Ms. Chairman, thank you. I'd like to also say our prayers, going out for a full recovery for Delegate Danny Marshall. Again, he's a very lucky man to have found a, a lung that's compatible, so thoughts and prayers are going out to him and his family. Attended the Chamber Business After Hours at Tad Tavern in Martinsville a couple of weeks ago. Great event, great networking. I got to meet some people out there that I wouldn't otherwise have met in Martinsville Henry County, and, uh, attended the West Piedmont Planning Commission meeting out there, and another great event to meet with some of those folks in the different counties that surround Pennsylvania County. Also spoke before the Danville Rotary Club on March of fourth. The members were very engaged, asked a lot of questions about what's going on in the county, specifically, you saw tonight, about the Ballacko project. Attended the awards banquet for the Blair's Volunteer Fire Department at Atkinson Barn on March the eighth, and congratulations to all the firefighters and the EMS personnel who were recognized that evening. Place was packed, by the way, so Darrell, yeah, it was, it was a good event. Attended the NRA banquet on March thirteenth at ODAC, met with the beautification committee last night, and I appreciate those folks there, their enthusiasm and approach to cleaning up our county. So stay tuned, there is a countywide cleanup in April. Make sure you check the newspapers, check the website for that. Also, that being said, anybody interested in serving on the boards, committees, and commissions for the county, please go to the county website, fill out a board bank application. Right now, Chatham Blair's, I need somebody to serve on the beautification committee, so if you're interested in doing that, please fill that out. Ms. McCluster, she'll be gathering those applications, and I understand that the DSS Board member for Chatham Blair's is also stepping down the end of June, so if you're interested in that, please, uh, fill out a board bank application, and Ms. McCluster will get that to me. Also, I have in front of me, and it wasn't done tonight because the individual could not attend, so, Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me, I just want to read the certificate of appreciation. It's the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere appreciation to Richard Waters for his four years of service to the Planning Commission. Mr. Waters has given freely of his time, knowledge, and experience to fulfill the duties of the position, and he has worked diligently to support responsible growth, planning, and development that promotes the best interest of all county citizens. The Board expresses its sincere appreciation to you for your dedicated service and commitment to the county's future over the past four years. Given this eighteenth day of March twenty twenty-five, signed, Kenneth L. Bowman, Chatham Blair Supervisor, Robert M. Tucker, Junior Chairman. We'll get this to him. Unfortunately, he could not make it this evening. And the last thing I've got is, I want to wish my daughter a happy birthday on March of twenty-sixth. She is getting ready to leave her thirties as of this birthday, so it's a big, a big jump for her. She's been traveling quite a bit. I think most of you know she works for NASCAR, and so about every weekend, she's in some exotic place, but she's going to be home for this particular birthday, so I'm looking forward to that. With that being said, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Height.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank our staff and, um, for keeping us in line, making sure we have information we need. Mr. Ingram, uh, spoke for a few minutes about Caleb Barker. Caleb was thirty-one years old. I've known Caleb since he was born. His parents used to live across the street from us. Just such a tragedy. Just, you know, folks, we just never know when time's gonna be, when our season on this earth is finished. And as I've sat here tonight and I've listened to everybody, we all need to remember, sometimes we just need to agree to disagree and be civil and still love one another and treat one another with respect. And on a personal note, this past week, my sister and brother-in-law, Tammy and Wayne Sexton, who have moved back to Pennsylvania County from Greenville, South Carolina, glad to have them back. They celebrated their forty-ninth anniversary, so that tells you my sister's a lot older than I am. And I know she's watching, so.
Got one on.
That's all I got.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. To, um, all of the people that came out tonight to participate in your local government, we really appreciate. You're having a part. This, you're watching democracy in action. To those that are joining us by way of Facebook or live stream, thank you also for tuning in, and, um, it is refreshing that, you know, there are so many people now that are engaged in how we actually turn the wheels of progress within the county. I'd like to also thank the staff that's working behind the scenes to make everything happen, and we really appreciate all of their hard work. They're actually doing the heavy lifting, um, you know, and I also want to take a moment to, uh, really just love on and thank all of the employees of Pennsylvania County, because, you know, as we have these discussions, we talk about all of these precious resources that we have, but nothing really outstrips, outpaces the actual employees of Pennsylvania County. Now, having said that, you know, you hear people talking about, you know, we need money, we need money, that sort of thing. We, we're just going to ask our employees to, uh, to kind of dig deep. You're on a winning team, and, you know, we might have to spread out the responsibilities, we'll have to work a little harder, but I assure you, we're going to get to that place and space wherein we can take care of you appropriately. And sometimes, you know, satisfaction is not always realized in, you know, a raise or bonus. Sometimes it's self-gratification and the pride that goes with doing your very best and being part of a team and being on the winning team. So I say to the employees, thank you, and, um, you know... So I say to the employees, thank you, and, you know, what Mr. Bowman just ticked off there, his list, okay, I'm the chairman, so what he said and what Mr. Ingram said, I, I think I still got him about 20%, I'll need to go through the list. Thank you. Mr. County Administrator, Mr. Shorter, please.
I don't have anything, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. County Attorney Evans.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's been said that we are free to think, we are free to plan, and we are free to then act, but once action has been taken, we are never free from the consequences. I appreciate the Board's thoughtful deliberation of all the matters and actions that it's taken today. It's a, it's a pleasure to be part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And with that, everyone travel.